Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of North Plains City Council Regular Session Meeting, Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 7:01. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Thank you. Mayor Lenahan here, Council Fage.
Here.
Council Kendall.
Here.
Council Martinez.
Here.
Council Payton here, Council Sheldon.
Present.
And Council Smith. Here, thank you. All right. Welcome and good to see everybody. Item number five is our consent agenda. We have the approval of today's agenda and the approval of the June 20th City Council, 2022 City Council Minutes and Resolution Number 2197, reappointing Joanna Orville to the Parks and Rec Board for a term through June 30th, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move approval.
All right, we have motion on the table by Council Martinez, seconded by Pastor Sheldon. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing that, motion carried, thank you. Item six is our public comment. I have one person that has signed up to speak during this time. Before I call them up, worry, is there anyone else? Or have you received anything, Mia, you know?
I have not received anything prior to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Glenn Warren would like to speak. Glenn, would you like to step up to the microphone? At the end of this table? Yep. You're welcome, yeah.
Name is Glenn Warren, appeal box 544, 1099 Southwest Main. Did my old one, 10845, 311. I'd like to talk about the old house a little bit. I, the food bank did close and I took the carport down. I want to apologize to North Plains that I should have did a waiver or something in case I got hurt. I did not get hurt, but I would like to later on sometime maybe volunteer to, if you guys are going to keep that house, I could do some maintenance that I'm retired to make it look more presentable. I just would like probably come up and talk to someone at the city about volunteering and doing something like that.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say. I took that down and everything's fine.
Well, thank you for doing that. I remember that you did put that up years ago. And I appreciate you wanting to volunteer your time to clean the area, clean the house up, whatnot. And Andy would be the person that you'd want to speak to at the city. Okay, so just make an appointment with him or whatnot.
We can keep you busy.
And I did take the Ruby's line that she put on the thing up to her house and there is some property that's still there, Ruby's, the chairs and lights and stuff. So I put that on the side of the house and I tried to clean it up too.
She has a way to get that back to her property, I would imagine.
Well, I already took up the awning and stuff to her. I didn't know that other was her property, so I didn't want to, you know, did everything okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for doing that, I appreciate it. All right, thanks, Glenn. All right. Well, tonight is our presentation, sorry about that. Item number seven A on our agenda, we have tools and valley fire rescue and a report. And I see that we have Laura Hitt from TVFNR online. Hi, Laura.
Hi, it's nice to see you all, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. Just one minute and let me get my screen share set up so I can share a presentation with you. And then I can still see you on the side, maybe thumbs up, or yes, you can see what I am presenting. It should say to all at the Valley Fire Rescue with the logo, black screen.
Good to see you.
Awesome. All right, again, good evening and thank you all for having me here to meet with you this evening so that I can share just a quick update of the district activities for 2022. So through ice storms and extreme heat wave last year, wildfires, and then also the second year of a pandemic, our focus is remaining on providing fast and effective services. So staffing has been a challenge for us this past year with COVID positive employees, retirements, and then injuries. But we have had recent graduates from a paramedic academy and a firefighter academy that we know will help. But we are also going to be holding at least two academies per year for a firefighter and single role paramedics moving forward based on our anticipated attrition. More than 38% of our managers and chiefs can retire in the next five years. So we are working to develop our current and our future leaders. Jinaro Wasparza was promoted to captain in 2020 and Karen Buraker in 2021. And we want to see more diverse company and chief officers. Only 4% of our career firefighters in the United States are female and TVFNR is at 7%. We have been successful with fire camp for girls and career fairs. And the district's single role paramedic program has also helped to boost the number of women applying to work on the line. But we are going to continue our, continue our recruitment outward outreach efforts. The communities we serve speak a diverse number of languages. And some of our second language speaking firefighters provide education, but we need to improve the way we connect with our community groups and our non-English speaking residents. We recently reorganized our community services division to better focus on risk reduction. And this year, we are going to focus on wildfire prevention, apartment landlord outreach, and care home engagement. And we did return to normal operations mode on March 1st and are once again attending in-person events. Our community rooms do remain unavailable, but will be included in a broader reintegration plan. We are very grateful for the community's support of our bond measure. We received a triple A bond rating from Moody's and we sold our first round of bonds this past March with a 1.49% borrowing rate. The investments in our bond program are to include replacement of response vehicles, fire station improvements in 10 of our 29 stations, which includes Station 17 here in North Plains, funding for safety upgrades at our training center located in Sherwood, and then purchasing land for future fire stations. After a small decrease in calls for service, you'll see the total number down here on the bottom of the screen, a small decrease in calls for service in 2020, demands for service did increase in 2021. And that was more aligned with the trend that we were seeing in 2020 prior to the pandemic. As you can also see, the large majority of our calls remain medical in nature, which is consistent throughout our service area. We use incident and response data like this to understand the needs and the risks in our communities. And this data is the foundational data we use to inform our decisions when we're looking at apparatus, personnel, and station seating needs. Emergency response leaders locally and across the country understand that current emergency medical and care systems do need improvement. The pandemic has magnified these inefficiencies and we have some systems that are buckling under the string. And as a reminder to the council, in Washington County, as the 911 provider, we respond to almost all of the medical calls in the county, but usually the private ambulance provides the transport of the patient to the hospital. And we have been working with Washington County, the private ambulance provider, and our other neighboring fire departments to address some system, system challenges related to that transport reliability. Just this past February, an emergency agreement was put in place so that TVFNR could transport some of those patients when the provider, private providing, provider needed help, excuse me. We are also piloting a program you see here in the picture called SHARM. And this pilot seeks to proactively bridge gaps between the high utilizers of 911 and the system. So our SHARM paramedics are seeing a small but active group of clients. And the goal is to improve their care so they do not have to use the 911 system as frequently. We do continue to learn lessons from past wildfires and focus recent training blocks on wildfire operations. We helped with the passage of Senate Bill 762 to increase mitigation in urban interface areas. And we are going to continue to monitor the Governor's Wildfire Response Council to determine how legislation and funding can support local efforts for homeowners and for TVFNR to prevent and to respond to wildfires. And then lastly, as mentioned earlier, we want to conduct outreach in new and different ways to more people in our community. We do have a hard copy safety newsletter that we send out each year. Those of you living in our service area should have received yours this last month. But we also started an interactive electronic newsletter called Safety First and it highlights seasonal safety information. This newsletter, as you see a snapshot there on your screen, is available at tvfr.com. And we just updated it with summer safety information. And we also conducted several wildfire webinars to help homeowners in our service area prepare for emergencies in their areas. Those webinars were recorded and so you can also go to tvfnr.com if you would like to watch those recorded webinars. And with that, I promise that I would be brief with you this evening for allowing us to be with you. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Laura. So forgive me, but would you be so kind and just, I think that you have replaced Kim Hahn, correct? Am I right?
No, so Kim Hahn is, she was promoted, she is now our Community Risk Reduction Manager. And I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce myself at the beginning, I'm our Deputy Chief of Administration. And so Kim was promoted to manager, she was a Public Affairs Officer, so we will backfill her position. My role as Deputy Chief of Administration, I oversee our human resources, occupational health and wellness. We have a fleet, facilities, new construction, supply department, our business strategy analytics. So those are the areas that I oversee as the Deputy Chief of Admin.
Thank you.
Kim is still around.
Good. Well, I, I look forward to working with you, I suppose until we get a replacement for Kim, correct?
Yeah, we did replace our Public Affairs Officer and I'm sure you will be meeting with the one assigned to your area soon. They just started, I want to say in the last couple of weeks.
What kind of, I know that you had a recent event for women and girls. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so that's the fire camp for girls. It's a Portland-associated event and so there is a camp that is held at Portland Fire and that was held two weekends ago. And then we have also, due to the number of girls that want to apply for the camp, it's available for girls and women ages 16 to 22 to apply. I don't have the numbers of our last camp, but we held it from Friday through Sunday and they come to our training center every day. And what it does is it gives these girls an opportunity to understand what the fire department is all about. We go through some evolutions where we have them pull some hose, we stretch some ladders, do a little bit of work like that. But it's also an opportunity for leadership and engagement for the girls to get together and really do form a bond that they can see themselves in a career such as the fire service. And so it takes time, as we said, the ages are 16 to 22. We are starting to see some of these girls starting to come through and applying for positions and getting hired into local and even our fire department, which is really exciting.
That is very exciting. And are you still doing, have you reinstated or re-implemented the Citizen Academy?
Yes. That's another thing we're looking forward to hold again. And I do believe we are scheduling one for this upcoming fall. So if you are interested in that or you have people that are interested, please let us know. For now, you're welcome to contact me and I can get you to the right people.
Well, I did that a few years ago, I think when I first became mayor and that was so much fun and it was a great learning experience. And then a couple of years after that, COVID hit and I knew that it was off the books. But I'm glad to hear that it's reinstated and I suppose if any councilors are really interested, I would strongly encourage you to go through that because it's a, it's a great learning opportunity and it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, truly exposes you to TVFNR, the fire service, and we really did miss this opportunity these past two years. So I'm glad we're bringing it back.
Yeah, that's what I'm pretty excited about doing. One of the things before I grow up, I want to be a fireman or at least, at least, at least do the volunteer stuff. So anything I can get involved with, you know, that is something I'm lucky to do.
Awesome.
Any, any questions from councils? Thank you, really appreciate the report, Laura, and we look forward to just continuing partnership with TVFNR.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much for having me this evening, have a great rest of your evening.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, tonight is our staff report night and for staff, we have Robby.
Good evening, Mayor Lenahan and councilors. Do you hear me? Okay. Chief Haxton and I did have an opportunity to meet Kim Hart's replacement at the chamber meeting. And she's from the Sheriff's Department, but I don't remember her name, I'm sorry, Chief Haxton. So Kim was able to introduce her at the chamber. So I wanted to highlight for you just a few end of the fiscal year numbers in my report. So one of those was on the two charts, you can see just sort of the trend from pandemic recovery from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, next to each other, those lines, and how we sort of, you know, went up and then stayed up and followed some of the similar trends during the times of year. And then just some comparison of four years of library checkouts and visits next to each other there on the bar graph. Just interesting information. It was interesting to me that our circulation went up when our visits still are downsized. And I, we think that's partially attributed to people using us in the downloadable formats. And also the fact that you don't need to renew your library card every year anymore, it's every four years. Possibly people are getting what they need, you know, without visiting because some people prefer to use, you know, our services that way and that's fine. But it'll be interesting to see what happens since we are still in a pandemic time, you know, as, as time goes on, it'll be interesting. And our next big event coming up, we have, we're hosting Steve Everline here and Jesse Mays for the earthquake preparedness. And this is a very dynamic presentation. City Manager Barnes heard it before at a conference and he's spoken at TEDx Portland. And it's just really good practical information for earthquake preparedness. And those are the things I wanted to highlight this evening. Any questions? Comments?
Council Martinez?
No, just thank you for some of those checkouts that you mentioned, probably like me where I'm like, hey Carol, can you put my books by the door? And she just.
Yeah, we're still happy to do that.
There to pick up, thank you.
Yeah, we're still happy to do the distance, you know, pickup, just whatever people need outside or in the, best of your. Thanks.
Is the library outpost at Sunset Ridge still?
Yeah, it's doing great. It's, we're replenishing the youth books quite often. The adult books seem to be replenished by the community and, but it's, it's definitely flourishing and being used properly, you know.
And I knew that there was some discussion about having other outposts. Is there any news on that?
I think we can move forward on that once we flesh out our public works department. Because they'll need to provide some parameters for, we have some volunteers who'd like to build some, but public works needs to provide some specs to them.
All right.
And whatnot, yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I just want to say thank you for the wonderful content you're providing. I'm a little sad I don't get to participate because I'm working, but to see you in this is wonderful. And I know a lot of people are getting great, great use out of it, so keep up the great work.
Oh, thank you.
The lot was fun.
Good, I, thank you for live streaming some of it.
Yeah, I got to watch some, yeah, that was fun. He was entertaining, I liked his, his sense of humor, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, next up we have Police Department Chief Haxton.
Hello, there, pretty, Mayor, Councilors. This is the staff report. Looks like we had 232 calls for service, North Plains staff, please. Getting, doing a lot for this one. There's no trends. The big highlight obviously was the live golf tour. Not that there's any issues per se with the actual event, but there was weed over of traffic came into our plant, a lot of it. That kept us kind of busy and people were speeding going to and from, so that kept the deficit there on more of that. If it came in that area, especially since that's some bottlenecks that really pushed it down in there. They're spreading some stop signs and stuff, but that's a lot of stuff to want to figure out for next year, working the golf folks. And that's talking to Andy, I think if it gets more built out, some of that will fix itself for being able to meet into it. Doesn't necessarily fix North Plains' problem or Pumpkin Ridge's problem because that's still going to be bottleneck. Yeah, people are speeding a little bit more unwardly than normal. Other than that, the numbers, you can look in the handouts I put in, the numbers are virtually, again, we're right at average to above average, especially with the sub initiative, when you look at the, the quarter stats. I apologize, I should have caught it earlier, but the hours of the day are off. That was last quarter, not this quarter, I was just looking at that and that covers some school year, so I can get that too if you'd like. And then the last part is kind of the heat map we talked about for the first six months, January through June. And that kind of gives you an idea of what kind of crimes and where they're at in the city for the most part. That's really about it. I have any questions? Also, by the way, we're going to do the Florida Gower Club chat, that's, obviously it's kind of a, that thing, so. The approximate, this last, this last point.
And I do believe Officer Conway is back on duty?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure she moved back last month. We mentioned that her first day back, so I think the day of the last council meeting, but I can't picture her. So she hasn't been injured yet again, so that's fantastic. So like.
People are really excited to have her back.
Yes. She's doing fantastic.
And then we get a new deputy, this is all.
Well, yes. I've got a way to talk to Andy, but that, it's the barter's. The barter's, and again, it's not going to take place until, you steal my thunder, it's going to be that next city council meeting. It doesn't happen until September, so it's, you still got a little bit of time. The barter's who filled in for Conway in her absence, both the city and the community thinks he's fantastic. And honestly, he is, he's a great fit for the city and he'll do a tremendous job. So Dr. Waldron's not doing a great job because he is, he's fantastic as well. And maybe at some point, Waldron, I know, wants to come back, it's just a matter of working it out with his family in the hours, so. Yeah, barter's going to be a great fit, so yes, it's been selected and will be, will be joining us. Like I said, September 3rd-ish, I'd have to look, she said the 10th, she gave me the hand, hand signals for that. But it's whatever the date is, so it's going to be beginning of September.
Do you have an update on National Night Out?
It's still happening, August 3rd, 6 to 8. So we'll have a bunch of the sheriff's office stuff. The only thing that I know that we're not going to have is the K9, which is going to be upsetting to some people. But that's because they all literally, I was told that we probably didn't get all of them because they have training that day and then talking Sergeant O'Reilly, it turns out you have training, but it's going to be in Platte County, so they're all going to be at the coast doing training. So unfortunately, it just doesn't look like it, but we'll have a bunch of other stuff. And I talked to, I want to say it was Patty Burns at the chamber meeting. And that portion of it is like the hot dog portion, that's been handed off to her, so hopefully Eva and those folks will work that out. It's good to, well, take care of, so.
Do you need any of us for anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much word away. Hopefully, and I'll, I'll check in with her as we get closer, make sure that's, that's, that's done deal.
Any other questions or comments from council? On Council Payton and then Councilor Kendall.
Thank you. Could you refresh my memory as far as if the city was paying for additional police coverage for the live tournament? Or if that was something included, the pumpkin rancher by live, when they were paying for additional police coverage for the traffic control?
So live tournament was all sheriff's office. So because Pumpkin Ridge falls under Washington County, they had, I can't give you enough, but they had a bunch of overtime spots in the county. The city didn't do anything different. We had our one deputy and then we had myself working, so therefore, a little while, there's two of us working, just working the traffic. So we didn't, live didn't pay for anything to do with the city or any extra traffic control or anything.
And would you say that a majority of your time during that tournament was spent dealing with speeders and traffic control for the live tournament?
Good question. Trying to be the best way, I think I noticed an uptick. Again, the Thursday, there was a little bit more uptick in the traffic. So I just naturally went and hung out there because I figured out the route that they're going to take. It wasn't until really Friday and into Saturday that it was deemed. There was some unexpected consequences, you know, like anything that happens with, with a first event. For instance, the big one that I noticed was, and I didn't realize this until I stopped a couple of people. I had no idea that Uber was going to be a thing to get people to and from the tournament. No clue, that's a, that's a first for me. So there was a lot of Uber drivers and I, my guess is, is that they were taking the quickest route on the Google Maps thing, which took them through North Plains as opposed to following the sign. So that was some unexpected of those learning points of the traffic, so. So that was one of those things that we did is we just ended up doing it. So going forward, we may have to spend a little extra energy on possibly some overtime spots for, for some track for, make sure that we have some more bodies in the city for that. Again, it's just going to be, there's potentially a bunch. Then of course, they had some traffic issues that they were able to work through. Created more bottlenecks when a car broke down at the entrance, so I think there's a, some, some deep re points that's a little bit to look at through. Should hopefully relieve some of the issue with the city, but again, I think it's still going to be a potential issue. As for where we're expecting the majority of our time, I think we chose to, I don't, again, that's just because there were speeders and stuff. I'm just trying to just slow it down, so we definitely probably use some more.
I think my follow-up question is just for Andy, is there anything at the city level that we can implement for future years as far as requiring, you know, live tournament or whoever happens to draw thousands of people that's more than our city population into one spot to pay for that police coverage? I'm just imagining other cities, just Hillsborough, have a Washington County fair. I'm not sure how that all shakes out as far as, you know, how police coverage. You know, how police coverage is paid for, for such a large event like the fair, but. I'm just thinking about from a city perspective, why are we paying for crowd control for an event that. Clearly has the funds to take care of that and cause a bottleneck throughout the city that residents were, you know, mentioning. So just for future reference, is that something that we can do as a city or give feedback to Pumpkin Ridge or anything like that? As far as traffic for future years?
Yes, absolutely. We, we even spoke about that the week before the tournament, um, but it was just tough to know what was going to be coming. I don't think our officers spent an inordinate amount of time at the site. We really, we've been in town doing a lot of dealing with traffic. And any of the extra security that was needed was, Jim said, contracted out through the county. And I don't know what their arrangement was, but I was talking to. Chief Deputy, uh, the week of the, uh, week of the tournament about what do we need to do some sort of cost share. You know, for any extra security from planes. Most of that was gonna be related to even sort of, you know, crowd control protests or things like that. A little bit of the tr- traffic we anticipated, uh, but I think he nailed it. Um, there was a lot of ride share that did come through. And Uber lived, they're just, I mean, they're required to follow the map and wherever it takes them, that's where they gotta go. Um, so that was something that was a bit unanticipated, but I think this tournament, the undersights, I'm doing it two more years. This was a, this, this was the pipeline and there will be adjustments made for next couple.
Councilor Kendall and then Councilor Page.
Chief, on the overtime, did, did we, was there any activity in that overtime period that was the least expected by anybody, you think?
Most, again, it's mostly self-initiated. So it's, it's the same stuff we've been talking about. Trying to be preventative.
I was, uh, there was some, uh. Business in town here and, uh, some of the business owners would have liked traffic to go through a drill planes. Especially as a lot, and they could make a better day of it. How much do you think would affect this if it didn't rattle through here? And, and they actually went through a town. Would that be? How much value was there? Were, was that secret city or, you know, any of the people's ran out the road as such? The eaters, especially some more, uh, a smaller, uh, traffic.
Well, I think, uh, I think the city could benefit from it. However, uh, my understanding is on the peak times. Uh, and again, I, I think more, Pumpkin Ridge is gonna have to adjust whatever they do on the traffic. But which isn't just necessarily the route that they went in. There's some things that they're gonna have to do logistically within Pumpkin Ridge to be able to. Uh, access that many vehicles. I mean, let's be honest, Pumpkin Ridge is not designed to, I, I, it doesn't seem like it's designed to have 10,000 people. In, in the span of a day to, to be there. So it's just not good for them right now. Not that they couldn't fix that in a year. Uh, but the traffic was literally backed up from 26 bumper to bumper, my understanding, up to, up to Pumpkin Ridge. Uh, at times. Uh, now, if you put that through the city, that means. That it's gonna create log jams for the actual residents and anybody doing business for those, for those two days. So I think there's some benefit to it. However, uh. I think if you're gonna go feeder, you're gonna wanna do something with the city. It's not like they don't have this phone app and they don't know where they could go. I don't know. I don't believe that funneling them through the city is going to do the city, uh, necessarily good for, like I said, congestion. Uh, so again, I think there would be some benefit, but I think the, the traffic jam. And especially, like I said, I don't think Glencoe and West Union, that stop sign is designed to handle that. That's gonna be a huge bottleneck. And that's gonna back up all the way to Glencoe. So I don't think for the primary way of getting in or out, it's, it's gonna help us.
So having a, having a pick works, maybe do, like, do traffic, pressure cars go this way, ready cars go that way, what do we do?
Uh, they, again, they were doing that, uh, on the less traveled roads. And that was the whole reason for that route, uh, going up to Dershaw and working the way around. It's because they can control those intersections where there's way less traffic. Uh, that just does not seem. I don't believe that's gonna be feasible at all on Glencoe. That would be awful for Glencoe. There's so many people to get in and out. But I would say the regulars or the people that do that for their business, uh, that, that kind of massive influx is. Is gonna create more, way more problems than benefit, would be my, my opinion.
Yeah, cause there's the three percent, there's the three cent gas tax and all those, and those eaters, I'm pretty sure they love to have, uh.
Go ahead.
Chief, um. Getting out the egress, was that a big of a problem? Was the bottleneck mostly coming in and people were kind of spacing out, waiting to exit? Cause I'm wondering if there'd be a, okay, yeah.
Questioning both. Uh, now, again, there's some, there's some learning points. There's, there's a lot of deep re points and some things that they need to go over for next year. Uh, for instance. Uh, I think, if I remember the plan, they, they expected everybody to kind of stay and enjoy the fireworks, enjoy all that stuff. Well, one of the things that happened, it was kind of like everyone's gonna go there and then everyone's gonna leave. Well, one of the things that happened was at about, whenever the golf tournament ended. There's people who said, I'm out, boom, and they're out. And they were, they were leaving. Well, you also had people at that point that were coming in because they wanted, they didn't care about necessarily the, the golf tournament. They wanted to see the fireworks and, and the band. So you've got some of these people coming and going. Uh, when it's really designed in kind of a one-way, one-way out and stuff. So it, it, again, there's some things that they gotta work through and how they're gonna do the event. Potentially it would be much better and much, well, it should be, because you should learn some things and be able to implement those changes, uh, for next year. Again, they had, they didn't have a whole lot of, uh, time to prep this year, uh, with, with the short few, to, of only a few months. But again, other places like Eugene, people deal with this all the time on a regular basis. So it's, it's doable. But again, I think, I don't want the traffic coming through the main, main areas of North Plains, uh, as, as the direct route. It's fine if they wanna kind of filter through there because they wanna stop good gas or, or food, especially if anyone gets built between now and, and next year. That's a recipe for disaster for the vast majority of people in North Plains. They come and go to North Plain on a daily basis.
Any comments or questions? Council Martinez? Thank you, Chief. Um, all right. So the Community Development Department monthly report, um, Andy.
Thank you. Well, since we don't have a public works or a planning right now, I smooshed them into community development. Cause it's covering public works, engineering, land use, all that, you know, shorten the agenda. But a lot of activity going on, um, between planning, engineering. You'll see a lot of the, uh. Engineering projects are related to some of the CIP update that we got, uh, a couple of months ago. So a lot of those projects are in, um, the buying stages right now. Couple of things to note, we did have the pre-construction meeting with Peel Excavation, the bidder for the Justin Mace project. We had that last, uh, week and year. And so they're all set up to, um. Start work a couple of days after they go to the festival end. So they started, uh, sending in some instrumentals and. Material requests and material, ordering some materials. Um, so that is going. Probably in the next week or so, we'll send out some, uh, communications and advertisements to residents. To let them know that between mid-odd years and, you know, mid-Decemberish, the parks can be closed. So be a regular tennis party and whatnot. Nowhere to go. Um, let's see. Uh, we did hire, um, two public works, uh, employees last week. So that was productive. One will be full-time. Um, his name's Cody Brown. He'll be, uh, starting August first. And the other one is a seasonal, um, operations staff. And he started on Friday. Did they have, we said, wait, can you start? So he was there the next day. Um, so he's already been doing, doing some stuff around the city, Isaiah. So they'll look good. Give Andrew and Tom here some, some help, which is much needed. So by the time we get, um, to the garlic festival, that preparation, we'll have four people with departments, um. So that's. Everything else I think is, is sort of in there. You see a lot of, uh, bill increments coming in through, um, hold on. So I'm happy to answer any questions from a public works, maybe an engineering or.
Comments or questions from council?
Still, still recruiting for public works, so.
I, I appreciate the, the report, um, three pages long. There's a lot going on. It really is one of those things where you look at this and you know, there is a lot going on. So I appreciate you taking the time and being as detailed as you could with it. So, thank you. Uh, Finance Department, monthly report. I guess if there are any questions or are you going to just give them?
Well, Bill's on a well-deserved vacation right now. Uh, put in a lot of work this year, as most everyone. Um, yeah, he's in Alaska right now, but a couple of days ago. I guess, um, I, I can't give nearly the detail that he does on a month, month perspective. Just to say that fiscal year has ended, but as he's sort of put in his copy ads in these places, we still have some reconciliation to do. So there are some things like if on transfers, we do at the end of the year, once we do some reconciliations. It usually takes until about mid-July, second half of July to give, you know, when there's credit card statements, invoices, all those things to sort of fully swing the reconcile. So I think in August, probably shoot for a full fiscal year and, uh, report. Um, water balances are, are good. Um, the department, they've been doing a good job of helping customers, you know, customers. Advertising, you know, and helping folks out that needed to draw down those water account balances. So those look better. I don't remember the exact number, but when we went live with the auto basis, the water payment system. Um, I think the take rate is better than we were expecting so far. So we're continuing to push that to get people to sign up. So.
I signed up. I love it.
There's 300 sinus, uh, big jets I take.
Okay. Yeah. So yeah, that matches. That pretty much matches where we're before. I think we had around thirty or so more water accounts. Yeah, anyway, we're, we're on trend to, to have more people sign up. Let's see. And yeah, the rest DC's, um. Bill can give a, a capital, capital funds, um, overview there. Um, we did finally, um, close out with business oriented, the water reservoir project, the water tank. Um, the final loan amount for that is around $6 million. So we were authorized for 7.6. We thought it might be about six and a half million, but it, and what we, what we borrowed was just a shade over 6 million, it's like 6 million, 20,000. We just got the letter on that today. The first loan payment on that will be in December. Uh, I, that's not a project that I can say was on time, uh, because of the pandemic, but it was, it was on budget. It ended up on budget. So that was good. So I'm happy to answer any questions for that.
Council Martinez, do you have any questions or comments for Andy? All right. Thank you. Seeing none here from the council. Um, do you wanna jump into the city manager report?
Oh, okay. Um, it's kind of all there. Uh, I will be going, I'm going to the. OCC, the City Managers Association Conference and Board Meeting tomorrow. So I'll be out the rest of this week. And if I don't have a Friday report, I'll have to forgive me because I, I won't really have my finger on this. Things will continue to operate as well. Um, August first, next, the next meeting. Uh, we will have a 16:00 work session on the levy, um, revulsion levy working group. Their sort of findings, recommendations, what those three meetings were like. We'll distill all that down into a presentation and discussion. And then, um, also working with our architecture firm to get our public works facility to schematic design. And then a, then a full construction document designs. We'll have a contract for that, uh, meeting to, and then some marketing. Those are for that. The network can start in August. Not heard of a live report necessarily, but Lori did wanna say for city council.
Yeah. Anybody that's going to run for council again, there are three of you whose terms are up this year. The packet, the election packets are ready. I have them at the office. Uh, you can come and get them. And I can answer questions about them. You have until August 23rd, I believe, to turn in and get, and get your, work on getting. At least 25 registered voter signatures. So I always recommend to get extra in case there are some that don't. Meet that criteria. Stuff for the voter check, what has to be in by September 1st. And you guys. Ricky, Krista and James, you guys are responsible for getting that information correctly to the elections office. Everything else comes back to me.
September 1st?
That's when the stuff has to be to the county election board for the.
Seems like it was later last time you did this. You know, it's September.
I've got all the dates and I, I've actually got packets here and it has.
I think the election, general election this year is November 4th. So it might be a week earlier than, you know, where it was last.
Okay.
That's going on. Cause they do it 81 days prior. So they.
Do you have packets here or?
I do. I, I have two of them here. Uh, one of them has already been picked up. So if the other two want them tonight, they can come and see me after the meeting.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. Any questions for Andy on his report?
It's a simple one. To bring up the water tower, has anyone had any thought about putting her logo on it?
When, when you bring it up, yes, I do think about it. I, there's a few things in that department I wanna kind of take care of first. But I haven't forgotten that. I think every time I drive by today, I think if you, and what, what do you, what do you know? You'd be thinking of some art. Do you have ideas for art?
Just our general.
Like a logo?
Yeah, just our general logo.
Okay.
Let's do computerized and make it.
Right.
I don't think it's expensive to do, but.
That's not infeasible for the future. Um, it's on, it's on a list, not high right now, but it's, it's on a list.
That's good.
Hey, glad to see you up and about.
You're not the only one.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Are there any council reports?
The, uh, they were listed in a work session, that's on the agenda. So I sent an email to the chair. He says, I'd be happy to, to, excuse you for that. And I was happy to advise.
That reminds me, next month, there is no Park Sport meeting. There is no planning commission meetings. They are both the week of the garlic festival.
Maybe you wanna trade with group. No, I need, I need somebody to trade with me in September. They'll be in Alaska.
Well, I had, um, no, I had a meeting in Au- August of many missions. So I, I have a five month. But I think I'm happy to see you, Parks.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Maybe you can make it as well, cause it's, it's on my name on. I owe you one.
So who's, who's taking it? Mayor, you're taking it? Okay. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things to report. I had, um, the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting today. We just went through, it was just, it was a pretty, I mean, although it was a full agenda, um, there weren't too many actions. We just had a couple of, um, updates, one from ODOT and there are several projects. Um, Highway 47, um, there's a detour for Highway 47, um, work being done. So I guess it's routing them to six and then taking you to 26. So you can, um, if you're headed to the coast, um, and you're going to take Highway 47, you might want to check, check out ODOT's website, um, before you travel. And then the M-Step, um, they're doing a road show, the county land use transportation is doing the road show. Just getting feedback from the communities, um, at local farmers markets and festivals and such on the M-Step program. And they will be at the garlic festival on August the 12th. In the afternoon, sometime, I guess all day. But they will be here if you're around for the garlic festival and just want to take a look at the project list. I strongly advise you to go over there and do that. There is a, they'll give, they'll, they have a, um, they'll have a sheet, um, some questionnaire type things. But the intersection at Glencoe and West Union is the only project that North Plains has on the M-Step, um, plan. And, um, today, um, when they discussed that plan, um, it's still on that plan. So, you know, fingers crossed, we needed to stay on that list. So, um, if you're around for the garlic festival, go check that out. Then we had the, um, Washington County Chair and Mayor's meeting. And we talked about, um, the county's plan for the homeless camp management plan. Actually, they're having a work session on that. Tomorrow, they're having a work session. But actually it was on their list tomorrow is the countywide broadband discussion. They're also going to be talking about homeless camp management and then the, our funding for the economic recovery. So there's a couple of things on there, um, agenda. If you're interested, you can pop over to their website and look at their, um, agenda and their packet. They will be having a, um, public hearing. And they're also looking for, um, um, feedback. The topic for discussion is something that I brought up to Andy. It's regarding the psilocybin. I know the voters passed that last November, I believe, 2020, I'm sorry. And they, um, are having a work session, I mean, a, a public hearing starting tomorrow. They're thinking about putting a, a ban on it for a couple of years. It was, uh, the information from Harrington, Chair Harrington was, um, new to a few of us. But there are several cities that are also looking at, what that means for their cities. And I think that's something that we also need to talk about. Um, and I was hoping that maybe that was something we could bring up with the city attorney and just, um.
Did you actually have the authority to ban it? If it's in the constitution, how the hell can they do that?
Well, they might put a, um, uh, more security on it for two years. But they're, yeah, they're having a.
You can ban it. You can do the same with marijuana. Still, these, I think that was in the, the, the law that passed in the local jurisdiction, the ability to opt out.
So there's, um, there's a Q and A. Printed it off, but if you go out to the Oregon Health Authority website, there's Q and A, there's a bunch of Q and A out there. FAQ, I'm sorry. But I think it's something that we, we need to talk about. And then I would like this city attorney to, uh, kind of give us the, the down the journey. What does that mean? What does that look like? You know, is there something that we should be doing? I know it's silent in our code. So, um, that's, um, going to have to come back to us for a discussion. And let's see. Oh, um, August 17th, the Hillsboro Hops is having a community day towards the North Plains and Banks. We will have our own unique, uh, link that you can go to, to purchase tickets. Um, by going to that specific link, then what it does is it kind of puts you all, it puts us all in the same section. And the, um, Mayor Banks and I, um, are going to work together. I'm trying to get her to throw out the top, the first pitch, but, um, she, she's, she's not into it. So I don't know, I'm probably into it. I mean, she doesn't do it, I'll do it. And, uh, so they're, they're looking forward to having us sell on August 17th. So there's more information to come. And, um, you know, certainly it'll get out on social media and hopefully you all can participate. Bring your family, so it'll be fun. And I think that's, oh, I think that's about it.
Yeah, I was there when they did Tiger 12.
Yeah.
And they go, both mayors threw up the ball and they did a presentation on the big screen.
Yeah. Yeah, and I attended one, I went to a game maybe the week after. And, and I saw their schedule and I thought, how come North Plains isn't on that schedule?
Yeah, I did the same thing on their Facebook page.
Oh.
I thought, why don't you do the close ones like lakes and.
Yeah, yeah. I contacted, um, uh, Mayor Hall, Callaway, because he's a big hops supporter. And I said, who do I talk to? And so he was able to link me to the people to talk to. And then I dialed in Andy and Corinne and Cindy Hurst from the chamber. So, um, between them, they'll get the information out and I think that we, I think Lori's working with Corinne to finalize the newsletter and all that kind of stuff.
Maybe we could tell her, so, garlic.
Um, I did talk to them about that. I, I, yeah, we'll see, we'll see how that plays out. They know, we, they know that we would be interested in having our, uh, stinky present. And so they're, they're working out the details on what that might look like.
Yeah, because they, they got that from, thinking you go after the rest of our ops.
Yeah, so it'll be a big year for, for stinky, so.
I've seen a race in the mascot around the, around the bases, maybe he's stinky versus garlic.
Yeah. So it'll be fun, it'll be fun. And if you're free on that night, do definitely purchase some tickets and go out and show our support for North Plains and for the city event, so that'd be awesome. So, um, other than that, I think that's all I have. Right ahead.
I noticed we've got a new rep from North Plains, from Miss Oregon.
Yeah.
Mrs. She, Mrs. Oregon, uh, Mrs. North Plains, one Mrs. Oregon America.
Yeah.
She will not be available on August 17th. I already asked her. She's going to be down in Vegas for Nationals.
I'd go to Vegas myself.
Yeah. Yeah, she has to be down there for about two weeks, but I already, I saw her today and I asked her, asked if she could be present. She was bummed, but there's, you know.
Yeah.
There's other opportunities, so. Yeah, we're pretty proud of her, that's pretty awesome. And she's pretty, she's pretty excited. Thanks for, um, bringing that up. Yeah. Any other reports? It's been a quiet month, so.
Yep.
All right, um, so, uh, I think we took care of the calendar and then, um, we have an executive session with, um, Emily Metasaur. How did I say, did I say that last name right?
That sounds good.
Okay. She can let us. Hello. All right, so before we, uh, go into executive session, Lori, I'm going to turn this over to Lori and, uh, we'll take it from there. The city council will now meet in executive session under ORS 192 dot 660 parentheses two parentheses H. Taking assault with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regards to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Only news media representatives and staff designated by city council are permitted to attend this executive session. News media representatives, staff and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end of the executive session. All right, we'll go into a consecutive session at 8:01.